All right, good evening. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting and the Elk Grove Finance Authority Regular Meeting Concurrent Agenda. Today is Wednesday, September the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, and it is six fifteen P. M. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, September twenty-fourth at one P. M. and Sunday, September twenty-sixth at noon. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number two thousand and ten dash-two-four, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. In the Zoom environment, a speaker timer will be displayed, counting down the three-minute time for callers connecting direct via telephone. They can utilize the raise hand feature by pressing star nine on their phone. And the city clerk will run a speaker timer, and after the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound to inform you one minute remains. When the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. As we do in the teleconference environment, when we do a roll call, we'll have a couple of those tonight with the concurrent meeting, or whenever we take votes on items, those are done verbally. And so for our roll call this evening, I will be starting that process with Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Soon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yeah.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
With that, we have everyone present. That'll take us to Section one point two, the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. And over her pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, oh my gosh. I'm gonna start over, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Apologies for that. I almost tripped here. All right, next item, please. All right, we have our moment of silence here. If everyone can please join me for just a moment of silence and reflection. Thank you. All right, thank you. Next item.
Next will be Section Two, Approval of the Agenda. I would just like to note that there is the staff request that Item eight-point-two, which was a scheduled public hearing, be moved to the date certain of the regular meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
All right. Next item after that, would the city clerk please announce any closed session items?
Yeah, before we go too much further, just looking for a motion in a second on the agenda, and that would be with a staff request for moving up Item eight-point-two to the regular meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Can we get a motion to move?
Move the agenda, all right.
Everybody at once. We have a motion in a second?
We do, and that is for moving that, it's to approve the remainder of the agenda, but for the Item eight-point-two, that will move to October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. For that roll call vote on the approval of the agenda as amended, I'll be starting with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
We have an agenda before us. And as you did know, Mayor, for Section Three, we do not have any closed session items on the regular agenda, so we'll move through Section Three of the closed session. Onto Section Four, our presentations and announcements. That first item is going to be Item four-point-one, which is a proclamation in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month.
All right, thank you very much. Can I get our city clerk to read some of the covenants of our proclamation in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month? And we are welcoming Chief Felipe Rodriguez with us this evening.
Excellent, and I'll pull up that recognition just for our viewing audience so they can join along. And for the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month being celebrated from September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an official celebration of Hispanic Americans whose ancestry can be traced back to Spain, Mexico, Central and South America, and the Caribbean. A recognition that started as a week-long celebration in nineteen sixty-eight and twenty years later expanded to dedicate a month recognizing the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our society. And whereas the objectives of Hispanic Heritage Month are to create a greater awareness of Hispanic contributions to American culture by celebrating the histories, cultures, and customs to illustrate the diversity of the Hispanic community and to encourage a greater curiosity within generations about the rich history and cultural heritage of Hispanics. And whereas, the city of Elk Grove is honored to recognize Chief Felipe Rodriguez as the Casumnas Community Services District's first Hispanic fire chief, who was sworn in as fire chief on December second, two thousand and twenty-twenty, leading a two-hundred-and-five-member staff that proudly serves the Elk Grove and Galt communities and one hundred and fifty-seven square-mile area. And whereas, Chief Rodriguez earned his bachelor's degree in occupational studies and his master's degree in emergency services administration at California State University, Long Beach, has served in a variety of roles in the fire service throughout his career, including firefighter, paramedic, fire captain, battalion chief, fire marshal, training chief, and fire chief, and has served our country as a United States Navy hospital corpsman in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the city of Elk Grove, hereby affirms and proclaims September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Elk Grove, and encourages the community to celebrate a collective progress shared with the Hispanic community, learn by seeing the strength that derives from our diversity, and honor a shared spirit of self-determination, dignity, and respect for cultural heritage. Signed by the full City Council, this twenty-second day of September, two thousand and twenty-one.
All right, thank you for that. Please welcome Chief Felipe Rodriguez.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Nguyen, members of City Council. Thank you kindly. I'm honored, and I do have a few thank yous, if I may. First and foremost, thank you to my wife and my children for their love and support throughout my career. I believe they are watching tonight. Also to my mother, Blanca Stella Alvarez, who came to our country as a sixteen-year-old, a young lady, and worked very hard to help support her family, eleven children in the family, of course, and then raising all of us, my brother and my sisters, and me as we grew up, setting that example, a great example to all of us, what hard work and perseverance truly is. Of course, I'd have to thank my grandfather, Rosendo Alvarez, who worked as a bracero here in California for over twenty years, serving in the San Joaquin and Sacramento Valley from nineteen forty's throughout the nineteen sixty's, working in the fields, including likely here in our very own Elk Grove. I know he would talk to me about going up and down the valley, picking fruit and vegetables, and providing for many others during the wartime and for many years thereafter. He was definitely a role model to me, a true inspiration, a man of faith every day of his life. I also want to thank those, the many who have sacrificed so very much for others to live out their dreams in our land of opportunity, especially to those who live here and work here in Elk Grove. To our leaders, the ones who are here at this meeting, and also including those from the Casumnas CSD who are watching tonight. Thank you for recognizing the contributions made by dedicated, hard-working devout people who bring great strength to our diverse community, as was mentioned in the proclamation. And it's all of us together who make up this great city, our great state, and our great nation. I am very proud this evening to receive this proclamation, but it's really all of the others that I've mentioned who truly deserve this recognition. So thank you so very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Rodriguez, and I could not think of anybody more deserving. You're so incredibly humble, and you really captured your humility in your comments and recognition of not only your family, but your ancestors that helped really shape who you are, and you are paying it forward in so many ways. So thank you for your continued contributions in our community. Any of my colleagues want to make any comments before we move on? Go ahead. Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo your sentiments, Chief. You're a great representative to receive this, but more than what you, than just being of Hispanic heritage, but what you identified earlier about perseverance and hard work, that's just great traits for any individual, and you exemplify those very much as what we heard about earlier. But I just want to take this moment to just recognize everybody of Hispanic heritage as the city of Elk Grove, eighteen percent of our community has Hispanic heritage, and it's great to recognize everybody here in the city. We're a city for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Soon. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so.
I can go next, Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry. I can figure out how to raise my hand in time.
No worries. Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Chief, it's really great to see you accept this award. You and I have known each other before you became the chief for CSD, and I watched as your heart pours out about representation of all communities and just listening to your story and how you got to where you're at. We're just so lucky to have you here, and so I want to say congratulations to you and your wonderful family for supporting you and everybody else behind you and having you here and getting you to where you're at, and then just making sure that we have those to follow behind you as well, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't, I want to echo, first of all, the comments of my colleagues, but I also just want to say, Chief, you've been a wonderful addition to the community regardless of your heritage, and the fact that you can claim the title as first is icing on the cake. And it's great that we have the opportunity for such a high-profile member of our community to accept this proclamation on behalf of, as Councilmember Soon said, you know, roughly eighteen percent of our population. So thank you so much, and I really appreciated hearing a little bit more about your background and your mom's sort of efforts to manage her own family, and then obviously she did a great job with her family. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spies.
Not entirely certain how much more I can add, other than, you know, certainly, one of the things I certainly appreciate about you, Chief, is that we both served in the military together. Your service in the Navy in difficult conditions is certainly admirable as well. And I, every time we have a veterans event, I'm certainly glad to have you there. And even a more important point is that our military service, you know, is made up of many people from many different locations, and Hispanic is certainly a large group of military service as well. And so thank you very much for representing as well, and I appreciate you being here today. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, and it is that diversity that brings this great strength to just our community, but to our state and to our nation. So thank you all so very much for your kind works. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations again, Chief, and we'll see you soon. All right, we will go on to our next item.
The next item will be Item four-point-two, which is a proclamation recognition of Constitution Week from September seventeenth to the twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-one.
All right, if I can, Clerk, would you please read some of the covenants as well for the proclamation? And we are welcoming both Angela Perry and Dallas Love, who will be accepting this, but I will have you go ahead and read some of these wherashes.
Affirmative. I'll proceed with the proclamation and have it up on screen for viewing audience. And that proclamation is for Constitution Week, being celebrated from the current time, September seventeenth through the twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, the United States Constitution was approved by the Constitutional Convention, laying the framework for our country's laws and government. And whereas, it is of the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles contained in the Constitution in order to effectively support, preserve, and defend it against all enemies. And whereas, the two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth anniversary of the signing of the Constitution provides an historic opportunity for all Americans to remember the achievements of the framers of the Constitution and the rights, privileges, and responsibilities they afforded us in this unique document. And whereas, the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, is to be celebrated, and the Constitution serves as a testament to the resolve of the American people to preserve their freedoms and uphold the inalienable rights of all citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the city of Elk Grove, does hereby declare September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one as Constitution Week in the city of Elk Grove, and encourages all citizens to reflect on the many benefits of our federal constitution and the privileges and responsibilities of American citizenship.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. I would like to welcome Dallas Love and Angela Perry, if you are with us. I see Dallas. Go ahead and unmute yourself. You're on mute, ma'am. Okay, there we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen and City Councilmembers for having me here and for providing this proclamation for us. This is for the new Rio Casumnas chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We are new in Elk Grove. We have been very active in the Sacramento area for a hundred years, but last year we realized that we had many members in the Elk Grove area. So in August of two thousand and twenty, we started the new Rio Casumnas chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution. So, and what we focus on is, and try to promote, is education, patriotism, and historic preservation. So we hope to introduce and grow our chapter in the Elk Grove area. For Constitution Week, we've put up library displays in four different libraries, the Galt, Walnut Grove, and the downtown Elk Grove Library, and we are just delighted to have this proclamation. I don't know, perhaps you're not aware that September seventeenth begins the national celebration of Constitution Week. It's a week-long commemoration, and it's actually, the most important document is one of our country's least-known official observances. Celebrating Constitution has been a time-honored tradition for the Daughters of the American Revolution. In nineteen fifty-five, the Daughters petitioned Congress to set aside September seventeenth through the twenty-third annually, changing the previously established Citizenship Day, which was on just September seventeenth, into a week-long observance. The resolution for Constitution Week was adopted by the U. S. Congress and signed into public law in nineteen fifty-six by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The aims of the celebration are to emphasize the citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, to inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation of our way of life, and to encourage the study of historical events, which led to the framing of the Constitution in seventeen eighty-seven. So again, we have many activities. We request proclamations from city governments. We do library concerts, displays, and we also have something called Bells Across America, where we ask fire departments, police departments, schools, government agencies, churches to ring bells for one minute at one o'clock, which coinces on September seventeenth, which coincides with the bell ringing in Philadelphia, which is where they first signed the Constitution in seventeen eighty-seven. So again, thank you for presenting us with this proclamation. We will display it proudly at our chapter meetings. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ruth Love. It's an honor to present that to you. I'd like to invite Ms. Perry, if you would like to make any additional comments and share some thoughts.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us tonight, and we appreciate your recognition of this very important anniversary. So I'd just like to echo Dallas's comments and say thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
All right, well, thank you, and you know, as I believe I'm the only council member that was born in another country, so I believe that we have others that, I think everybody else was probably born here, to my knowledge. If I fumble that, like I did the pledge, let me know. But I am just such a proud immigrant, and it's, you know, Constitution Week is so important for me, and I know that the school district also shares that resolution with all of the schools as a reminder of not only its importance and significance, but also as a launching point for also registering new voters, getting our seventeen-year-olds registered to vote for upcoming elections. So it's just such a remarkably important week as we celebrate not only our Constitution, but just the privilege of being Americans, which I know we all do. So thank you, and it's just an honor to present that to all of you. Hopefully, I can present it in person. I will make those arrangements. I would love to give that to you in person.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We look forward to that.
Thank you. Any other comments from colleagues? I don't see the hand raised function. So we will go ahead and move on to our regular agenda here, but thank you again to both of you for coming and joining us this evening. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our next item.
The next item will be Section Five, General Public Comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. For our participants in the Zoom environment, now would be that opportunity under Section Five, General Public Comment, to use the raise hand feature for us to call you in. For Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, there was, sorry, I jumped ahead to consent calendar. We did not receive any general public comment items prior to the meeting and writing, but with that, we do have one member of the public with a raised hand, so I will pull up that speaker timer to display the three-minute speaker timer limit. Oops, if I can hit the correct button here.
Jeff Doll, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. Jeff, it looks like you're still on mute. If you want to unmute, you can go right ahead.
Oh, sorry about that. I'm, my public comment is referring to a parcel, it's roughly a twenty-acre piece of land that is bordered by Albretton Way, Testerman Way, Bob Fight Park to the north, and then on Thera Way, there's the smaller Fight Park extension. Specifically, I was inspired by some of the recent openings of the District Fifty-Six Preserve, and there's also around, I believe it was, the CSD building on the eastern side of Elk Grove. There's also a new preserve behind that building that's coming up. I was, my idea, my thinking was that this twenty-acre piece of property would be an excellent area for its own preserve. It was zoned by the council a few years ago, about six, seven years ago, I believe, as an open space. The, it is privately owned currently by, by a trust fund. The owner, the previous owner passed away back in two thousand and fifteen. So my request, I don't know if this is something I have to bring to the planning commission's attention or your guys's attention or CSD, but my request is that this would be an excellent property to convert into the same similar kind of preserve that is already at District Fifty-Six. That's, thank you for allowing me to make this request.
Thank you for calling. Go ahead and please send me an email, and I will connect you to the right person.
All right, will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers?
For our list of attendees, I do not see any other raised hand features being utilized. That'll conclude public comment under Section Five, General Public Comment.
All right, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, and we will move on to the next item.
The next item is Section Six, General Administration Information.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Jason Bearman, City Manager, with some items to report on, some upcoming events and activities happening around the city. First of all, with school back in session, the police department has seen an increase in traffic and traffic-related calls for service around schools in the community. So to assist with educating drivers and keeping students safe, the Community Resources Bureau of our Police Department conducted Operation Crosswalk this last week. Officers connected with the community and performed crossing guard duties at intersections near nineteen elementary schools throughout the city. Reminder of the upcoming party in the plaza, which is our police department hosting an event, a party in our new Old Town Plaza, meet and greet officers, which is this Friday from five to eight. Officers and staff from various departments, there'll be food trucks and opportunity to get to know our wonderful police department a little bit better. Also, on Friday evening is our Peace and Love Musical Review at Sun Grove Church, seven o'clock. This event is nearly sold out. Last I checked this afternoon, I think we had about ten or eleven tickets left. So looking forward to that, and a big thanks to our Arts Commission for hosting that. Also, a reminder, we have upcoming two virtual town hall meetings scheduled for September twenty-eighth and October fifth provide information on how affordable housing and homeless strategies are implemented throughout the city. Each meeting will cover specific areas of the city by City Council, District, and CSD boards, service areas, divisions. For more information, you can visit the city's website and our Facebook page. City and Sacramento Public Library are beginning the design process for the relocated Elk Grove Library. The facility will be moving from its current location at Elk Grove Flor Road to ninety-two sixty Elk Grove Boulevard, just the former Rite Aid site, to engage the community in this project. An open house is scheduled at the current library location, October sixth, from two-thirty to four-thirty. Staff will also activate a pop-up kiosk that night at Food Truck Mania at Old Town Plaza from five to eight. Residents are encouraged to stop by to either event, learn more about the project, and share ideas about the relocation. More information can be found at ElkGroveCity.org/OldTownLibrary. Other exciting news, FlyFit is back. Elk Grove PD is partnering with the Fly Brave Foundation in Amped Fitness for another year of FlyFit, which is a free six-week fitness program that buddies police department personnel and city staff with individuals with developmental disabilities to learn about one another and build community bonds through fitness. Sessions begin September twenty-ninth and run through November third. Information can be found at FlyBrave.org/events. And then a couple of final reminders, the Business Watch Summit is coming up on September twenty-third at ten a.m. via Zoom. Information about that and how our local businesses can stay safe can contact Officer Jason Ramirez at J Ramirez at ElkGrovePD.org, registering the details. Also, our storyteller event that promotes cultural connections awareness. So our Diversity and Inclusion Commission is going to host a cultural connections event next Thursday, September thirtieth, at the center of District Fifty-Six at six-thirty. It's going to be a free event. We'll present five short TED-style talks from the Elk Grove Hispanic community members, who will share their unique stories in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. The event will also feature a free salsa dance lesson. Visit the city's website for the lineup of speakers and other event details. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Great report. In regards to the webinars that are coming up, is that information already on our social media page?
Should be available on our website. Social media will make sure that we get it out and spread the word widely.
Okay, yep, very good. And again, these are recurring topics from our community, so it's great that we have a platform to share the news, but thank you for that. Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add on to that, Jason, I saw some posts on Nextdoor, and so that some folks weren't aware, there's multiple. So if we could just make sure that they know there's two districts, as you stated, two and four are coming, so there's two sessions, but everybody can attend any one. That'd be helpful. Thanks.
Okay, yep, we'll make sure we get it out.
Yep, all right. Don't see any other hands raised, so we will go ahead and move on to the next item. Thank you for your report.
And that next item will be Section Seven, the Consent Calendar Items.
All right, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
For attendees in the Zoom audience, now would be the opportunity under Section Seven, the Consent Calendar Items, to engage in public comment. For the council, for Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, there was one comment that was received, a written comment in relation to Item seven-point-twelve. For the council, for mayor, vice mayor, and council members, there was one comment that was received, a written comment in relation to item seven point twelve that was circulated to the full council and staff. I'm going back to look over to our list of attendees, but I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. So that will conclude public comment on the consent calendar items.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Any questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Move consent.
Speed second.
We have a motion in a second.
With the motion and the second, I will proceed to the roll call vote, starting with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sun. Sorry, councilmember Sun. I'm getting ahead of myself. Now I'll go to Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
I'll try one more time, see if we can get Vice Mayor Wen.
Bye.
There we are. And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Consent calendar items will pass five oh.
All right, excellent. Next item, please.
Take us on to section eight, our public hearings, starting with item eight point one, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one community development block grant consolidated annual performance and evaluation report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I am Alicia Tutt, your housing and grant specialist. The item I have for you tonight is the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, also known as the CAPER. This annual report describes the, how community development block grant funds were used during the twenty twenty, twenty-one program year. And it's required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, so had within ninety days of the close of the program year. This report was included as part of your packet to highlight some of the accomplishments. The city received nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars in entitlement CDBG funding. And those funds allowed the city to carry out a number of housing and community development programs targeted primarily to low-income households. Funded projects included provisions for meals for seniors, homeless prevention services, landlord tenant, and fair housing counseling, emergency utility assistance, youth education and mentoring, and some other social service programs. Additionally, in the program year last year, the city received over one point three million in CDBG coronavirus or CDBGCV funds to respond to prevent and prepare for coronavirus. Those CDBGCV funds were and are still being utilized to provide support for Elk Grove Food Bank Services in preventing emergency food distribution and utility assistance to low-income Elk Grove residents impacted by the COVID-nineteen public health emergency, partnering with part Sacramento Self-Up Housing and the Police Department, assisting those experiencing homelessness with resources needed to shelter in place while reducing potential exposure. And as well as funding Meals on Wheels to expand their home-delivered and emergency meal program to senior residents during the public stay-at-home orders. As part of our citizen participation process, we published a public notice and the report has been available for fifteen days, public review and comment period. We did not receive any comments prior to this evening. And tonight, I'm asking that at the conclusion of this public hearing, council approve the report so that we may submit it to HUD. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you for that excellent update. I will declare that the public hearing is now open. And open the public comment opportunity.
And for our attendees on the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to speak addressing item eight point one. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, there were no written comments that were submitted since the publishing of the agenda and prior to this evening. And as I look over the list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. That will conclude public comment on item eight point one.
All right, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Let's see, any comments or questions? Otherwise, I will look for a motion.
Is it soon? I'll move the item.
Hume, all second, and I'll just say that for Alicia's benefit, I hope that they don't come out with any more acronyms to put behind the CDBGCDCB, weebie, DB, heebie, feebee funds.
CAPR. True. We have a motion in a second.
That, I will commence with the roll call vote, starting with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Sun.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of item eight point one will pass five oh.
All right, thank you. Next item, please. And as a reminder, eight point two is being continued.
Thank you for that, Mayor. So the item on low cost, low-cost spay neuter fee schedule will be moved to the meeting of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. That will take us on to item eight point three, which is actually for public hearings to consider the fifty-six annexation to Community Facilities District Two Thousand Three dash two Police Services, seventy-first annexation to Community Facilities District Number Two Thousand Six dash one for maintenance services, the forty-second annexation to Street Maintenance District One Zone Three AE, and the forty-fifth annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone Two.
Jason, can you hear me and see my screen?
Indeed, we have full audio and visual. Please proceed.
Okay, great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I am Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. Again, a familiar slide, probably familiar information. The city maintains eight special tax districts, which provide funding for infrastructure or for services such as for police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. The special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. On July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the parcels for the one zero zero seven five Sheldon Road Tentative Parcel Map Project and the Shell Gas Station Project into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearing, public hearings. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts. CFD Two Thousand Three dash two for police, public safety services. CFD Two Thousand Six dash one for maintenance services throughout the city. Street Maintenance District One for local collector and arterial street maintenance. And stormwater drainage fee zone two for stormwater drainage and runoff maintenance services. This is the fifty-sixth annexation into CFD Two Thousand Three dash two. The seventy-first annexation into CFD Two Thousand Six dash one. The forty-second annexation into Street Maintenance District One Zone Three and the forty-fifth annexation into Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone Two. And all of these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. More. Okay. More specifically about the projects, one zero zero seven five Sheldon Road Tentative Parcel Map is the first project proposed for annexation. The project consists of four single-family residential lots located northeast of Sheldon and Bratchaw Road. And the second project is Shell Gas Station. The project consists of approximately one acre, one non-residential acre located northeast of Elk Grove Boulevard and Highway Ninety-nine. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that presentation. I will declare that the public hearing for CFD Two Zero Zero Three dash two is now open. And open the public comment opportunity.
And as on the agenda, we bundle these four public hearings, but they are related to the same projects under eight point three. And you'll hear a consistent story from me, which is that we did not receive any written comments on the public comment opportunity for these items under eight point three. And as a review, the attendee list, I do not see a raised hand function, so conclude public comment on the public hearing for CFD Two Thousand Three dash two.
All right, thank you. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for CFD Two Zero Zero Three dash two is closed. And looking for a motion for number one, for A one.
Assume motion A one.
Hume, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
And that roll call vote for the resolution of A one, I will start with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Sun.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
All right, I'd like to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
And of four possible votes, four affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Motion A two.
Perfect. Motion A two. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second.
And the roll call vote for that resolution of motion A two, starting with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Sun.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of motion A two passes five oh.
All right.
Motion A three, introducing way of the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number Two Thousand Three dash two Police Services Annexation Number Fifty-Six for the one, one zero zero seven five Sheldon Road Tentative Parcel Map Project and Amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section Three Point One Eight Point Zero One Zero.
Thank you. Did we have a second?
He's second.
Thank you.
With the motion in the second, I will move to the roll call vote for the ordinance of motion A three, starting with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Sun.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Ordinance of motion A three will pass five oh.
All right, our second public hearing, CFD Two Zero Zero Six dash one Annex Seventy-One. I would like to declare that the public hearing for CFD Two Zero Zero Six dash one is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And again, I don't see any raised hand features from our attendees, and this would be for the public hearing for CFD Two Thousand Six dash one. We did not receive any prior written comments, and there's no raised hand features. That'll conclude public comment for CFD Two Thousand Six dash one.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for CFD Two Zero Zero Six dash one is closed. Make it a motion for B one.
Motion B one.
Hume, second.
With the motion and the second for the resolution of motion B one, I will start with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Sun.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
The resolution of motion B one will pass five oh.
Motion.
I'd like to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Indeed, of five possible votes, five affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax. The rate apportioned described, the measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration. And I thought I heard a motion by councilmember Sun for that motion on B two.
Yeah, motion B two, got ahead of myself.
No worries.
He's second.
With a motion and a second for that resolution of B two, I'll start the roll call vote with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Sun.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of motion B two will pass five oh.
All right, we got motion B three.
Motion B three, introducing way of the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number Two Thousand Six dash one Maintenance Services Annexation Number Seventy-One for the one zero zero seven five Sheldon Road Tentative Parcel Map and Shell Gas Station Projects and Amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section Three Point One Nine Point Zero One Zero.
Hume, second.
With the motion and the second, I will proceed to the roll call vote on the ordinance of motion B three, starting with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Sun.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
And the ordinance of B three will pass five oh.
All right, we are on to our third public hearing, SMD one, Zone Three dash AE Annex Forty-two. I would like to declare the public hearing for SMD Three dash AE Annex Forty-two now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And our list of attendees hasn't changed. We don't have any raised hand features and no comments were received prior to the meeting on this hearing for SMD Three AE. So with that, that will conclude public comment opportunity.
All right, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for SMD Three dash AE Annex Forty-two is now closed. And may I request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
Indeed, there is no majority protest of four possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property. Four affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
All right.
Motion C. Motion C.
I'll go ahead and second.
He's second.
And with the motion and a second for the resolution of motion C, I will start the roll call vote with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Sun.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of motion C will pass five oh.
All right, we are on to our fourth public hearing, SWDF Zone Two Annex Forty-five. I would like to declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex Forty-five now open and open the public comment opportunity.
Again, our attendee list remains the same. No raised hand functions are there. For SWDF Annex Forty-five, we did not receive any prior written comments. I go back over our list of attendees. I do not see the raised hand function. That'll conclude public comment for this annexation.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for SWDF Annex Forty-five is now closed. I'd like to request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
And again, there is no majority protest of five possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property. Five affirmative votes were returned. Ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion B.
Hume, second.
We have a motion in a second.
And the roll call vote for most, the resolution of motion D, I will start with councilmember Speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Sun.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
The resolution of motion D will pass five oh.
All right, next item.
And our next item will be the one item of section nine, our regular agenda action items and recommendations. And that one item is to consider policies for monitoring a return to in-person public meetings in the chamber. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. This is an update from the last time that we had this discussion in July of, or at the end of June. In order to talk about coming back to meetings in July, things changed a little bit with the mask mandate if we were to have meetings that were indoors. What has changed since that time is that what we were looking at last time we had this discussion was that the teleconferencing executive order actions were going to terminate as of September thirtieth of this year. What happened in the interim is the legislator, the state legislature took on the topic of continuing teleconference meetings. And what happened is Assembly Bill Three Sixty-One was passed by the legislature as an urgency ordinance. And then that was also written and approved into law by the governor. What AB Three Sixty-One permits is the continued use of teleconference meetings as long as there is a continuing proclamation of a state of emergency and that there are findings and that there are conditions in which there's a safety element in terms of meeting in person. So what that basically does is all the discussion that we had about the peeling back of the ability to teleconference that has dissipated. So now we have the ability to continue to teleconference as long as we can continue to make findings that in the conditions of meeting in person, that there are some safety issues and elements that are going to have us instead consider continuation of teleconference meetings. So the method in which this would occur is that as we move into our October meetings, staff will continue to monitor what the health order regulations are. And primarily for our purposes, what we're really looking at is that requirement for face covering when indoors. And that's kind of the tipping point that's been part of our discussions as far as when we want to return back into the chamber is when we actually see some relaxing of those regulations on face coverings. With the face coverings, it starts kind of obscuring actually the view of all of our faces as we try to talk in person. If it's still requiring us to wear a face covering when we're in in-person meetings, the Zoom environment's providing us. The Zoom environment's providing us an ability in order to communicate um effectively songs coverings. So uh what this would uh do and what you'd see in the future with this item. Is that staff as part of the provisions of AB three sixty one, kind of like the ratification of the emergency order that we have at the local level. You'll see a consent item that will continue to come forward from staff, but just basically reiterates whatever is going to be the uh. The county health orders as far as findings for us to continue in a teleconference environment. Um that wouldn't preclude us from being able to make decisions basically as staff. Once we find out if there are any new regulations, of course, we would transmit those out. And that would open up the opportunity for us to return back to in-person meetings. I think from our discussions that we've had in the past on this topic, we have a plan for being able to go back into the in-person meetings. But where we're at is in compliance with those health safety orders. We are going to be watching um to see if there's any changes. But as long as face coverings are required, we're going to be looking at the teleconference environment as we move forward. Of course, in the teleconference environment, we'll be following a lot of the rules that we're doing tonight. So for instance, all of our process of going through on votes as roll call votes. That would apply even if only one of our members was still teleconferencing. So if we got into a condition where we're able to come back. Um and use the regulations in order to have some of the council in person in the council meetings. If any of the members did teleconference, we would still be doing roll call votes for those uh those participants that were not uh in the chamber at the time. Uh but otherwise, it's kind of a sitting and watch from the staff perspective, and that will continue to have a check in on this every thirty days, just about. Just in terms of watching and keeping a pulse as far as what the requirements are for face coverings. But with the, with that, that's my presentation. If there's any questions, I'm available.
Alright, I have a couple of questions and comments, but I will wait and open up the public comment opportunity.
And for a public comment, that would be for item nine point one would be the opportunity. And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item nine point one. And as I go over our list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function. So we'll conclude public comment on item nine point one.
Alright, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Um so uh Mr. Linden, correct me if I'm wrong. So right now, staff is already monitoring based on the last. Um direction that you you got from council, and that was really regarding the face coverings. Once we're in a situation where that is lifted and we can convene. Um we're able to do so under that sort of hybrid scenario. And for those that choose to stay in a virtual environment, they have that option, and those who want to come in person have that option. Once we are safely able to gather without, again, the mask mandate. And this is really just an update to inform all of us that this uh is in compliance with AB three sixty one. That we have uh more time as it relates to um virtual meetings, you will.
Correct. I think probably the biggest element that's a change in all of this is that check in of every thirty days. And so with that, the um if it is to be found that there aren't conditions that are um. Endangering us from meeting in person. Um typically, that's one of those triggers that's going to have us being encouraged to be back to in-person meetings. But in the interim, if we're able to continue to make those findings, it basically enables the continuation of this teleconferencing. In the manner that we've been doing for the last year and a half. And so what it is, it's a little bit relaxed from what previously was in the um the provisions that were in the Brown Act. In which he had to go and notice where the locations were, open the locations, the teleconference participants. So it's a little bit more of um relaxed regulation in that regard. But that relaxed regulate, regulation is something to be monitored as time goes forward. And it does take an action of the council in order to make those findings to allow us to continue to teleconference in that way.
Okay, I mean, I saw very strong opinions about this. I I am welcoming and lo- hoping to come back in person soon. Um do you think thirty days is too much of a check in point? Um because say tomorrow, things changed and we got an update. That would, that's two more meetings before we have the option of convening in person. Um I would make a recommendation, maybe it's fifteen days. Um or, you know, at least in between meetings, because to my understanding, we're already equipped and ready to go. Um it's just really uh making sure that that switch happens and that notice happens and allows us to, you know, determine which we prefer. But that thirty days just seems a little bit long. Um that's again, my opinion. I don't know where where my other colleagues land. But do you think that that fifteen days would be sufficient time?
I think if I can chime in, what the thirty days uh regulation is, is that what it does is it. It extends the period in which a legislative body can entertain still using the teleconferencing environment.
Okay.
And so if there is a decision, so if we get a new county health order, staff is going to reach out to council. We're going to see what's going on in the uh. What the the, what the nature of the new health order would be, what that would permit, what um what would allow us to be able to go back in person. And I think it gives us, we have the flexibility to return sooner than we than we wish. What the thirty day check in and that going forward is to continue the provisions of allowing teleconferencing. Participants. So it's, it wouldn't restrict us in essence. Even if we had the teleconferencing as an option, we would still have the option to come in person. We could go in person next meeting, but we'd all be wearing masks um in order to stay uh at with the current health order that's out there.
Got it. Alright, thank you for that clarification. Um let's hear from my other colleagues. Um council member Hume, any questions? Comments?
No, no questions. I'll just, I'll follow whatever the comfort level of the council is.
Council member Spies, anything to add?
Nope.
Council member Soon.
No questions. I'll, I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation.
Vice Mayor Winn.
No questions. I'll second that.
Very good. You have a motion in a second?
The um. For us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's, if there isn't any formalized action, what it is, is you'll have an opportunity to vote on this on the consent calendar on the October thirteenth meeting. Which is to can be able to enable us to continue the provisions of teleconferencing. And staff will continue to monitor those health orders to see what options we have as as time rolls forward. So.
Alright.
If anything, we've, we've learned how to be flexible and to pivot around uh in these times of COVID, so.
That's it. Uh we're perfecting it since we're a year and a half in. So, thank you. Alright, um next item, we are, let's see. We are switching over to convene the city council and finance authority joint regular meeting. I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Indeed, and for uh this joint meeting, we will be doing a roll call, and this is effectively the roll call that will be for uh our finance authority. But before going into that, the main element, um as we talk about the finance authority as an entity. It is something that all of the members of the council, but as the nature of you serving as a council member, you're also a member of the finance authority. Um as a member of the finance authority, there's no additional stipend or compensation that you receive as being members of the finance authority. Um it is just another legislative uh kind of uh hat that you wear. For the roll call, I will be noting that we have um all of our members before. What if we were in person, I'd be able to say that I see that we're all here. But as we're in the teleconference environment, I'll be going through that roll call motion and starting with, you'll have a little bit of change of title as the finance authority members. But I'll be starting with board member Spies.
President.
Board member Hume.
Here.
Board member Soon.
Here.
Vice President Winn.
Here.
And President Singh Allen.
I hear.
And we have everyone in attendance for our uh concurrent meeting of the finance authority and the city council. With that, that'll take us on the the one item that's our public hearing for this, which is ten point two. It's a joint public hearing of the Elk Grove Finance Authority and City Council to consider adoption of a resolution of the city council. Authorizing the issuance and sale of special tax bonds for in behalf of community facilities district two thousand five dash one Laguna Ridge. And directing the execution of associated documents and also resolutions of the board of directors of Elk Grove Finance Authority. Authorizing the issuance, the sale of special tax revenue bonds and approved related financing agreements. As well as executing a letter of engagement with Piper Sandler and Company for underwriting services in connection with the bonds. And finally, going back as the council, a resolution that's authorizing all the necessary budget amendments to record the issuance of the bonds, bond proceeds, cost of issuance. Public improvement reimbursements and debt service payments.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council and Madam President, Vice President, and Board of Directors of the Elk Grove Finance Authority. I am Renee Atar, finance analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with a presentation for the special tax revenue bonds. For the Laguna Ridge Community Facilities District two thousand five dash one, um series twenty twenty one um bond issuance. Um the city has been working with the staff's financing team to help us analyze and size the bond. The financing team includes Jones Hall, our bound, our bond and disclosure council, fieldman. Roll up and associates, our financial advisor, Piper Sandler, our placement agent. Um all representatives from each of the firms are on the call this evening to answer any questions. Um just some background on the Laguna Ridge district. Um the district was created in two thousand five and has infrastructure and maintenance service. Components. Per the formation documents, eligible infrastructure costs may be financed through a bond. The formation documents also stipulate that the total maximum bonding capacity for the life of the district is two hundred and twenty five million dollars. Um in regards to um prior issuances, in two thousand seven, the first bond was issued for approximately sixty eight million dollars. In twenty sixteen, the second bond was issued for approximately one hundred and thirteen million dollars. Which also included a forty six million dollar refunding of the outstanding two thousand and seven bonds. In twenty eighteen, the third bond was issued for approximately nineteen million dollars. And in twenty twenty, the fourth bond was issued for approximately eleven point five million dollars. The remaining bond capacity after these issuances is approximately fifty nine million dollars. In the resolutions being considered for adoption tonight, there are not to exceed amounts and percentages, which represent the maximum allowed for this bond issuance. The par amount of the bond shall not be greater than thirteen million dollars, and the true interest cost shall not be greater than five percent. The financing team has provided us with good faith estimates, which are more realistic based on current market conditions. That par amount is eleven point three million dollars, and the true interest cost is three point three seven percent. However, as we near closing, these numbers may be adjusted slightly due to the changing market conditions. The bond is scheduled to close in October, and again, market to, market conditions at that time will determine the final amount. Currently, we are looking at eleven point two million dollars in bond proceeds net of expenses for cost of issuance, reserves and capitalized interest. The reserve amounts to one year of debt service. Um the market requires that one year of debt service be held by the trustee bank. This is a thirty year bond with a final payment scheduled for September first, twenty fifty one. Um special taxes will be coming from three developments which have designated developed and are supporting this bond issuance. Um McGary Ranch Village Two by Meritage Homes with one hundred and sixty one lots. Tuscan West by Richmond American Homes with one hundred lots. And Madera South Village Five, which is expected to be developed by Tim Lewis Communities with fifty two lots. For a total of three hundred and thirteen single family lots. I want to emphasize here that existing homeowners in Laguna Ridge will not be affected by this bond issuance. Their taxes will not be affected or are raised. Um the expenditures are authorized per the Laguna Ridge CFD two thousand five dash one formation document. And they are allocated for public improvement, which also includes payment of impact fees. With the approval of the proposed twenty twenty one series bond issuance, there will be no changes to any of the previous bonds for the series twenty sixteen, series twenty eighteen. And series twenty twenty. It will not affect, change, or supersede those bond issuances. This is a parity bond. The payments, reserves, requirements, and bond covenants will all remain as they were set forth during um the twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, and twenty twenty series. Issuances respectively. The special tax for these homes will be assessed on the homeowner's annual property tax bills. For the Laguna Ridge CFD um formation documents, the tax will increase two percent annually. This is identical to all of the previous bond issuances for this tax district. There are reporting requirements at the time of a new issuance and for ongoing disclosure, which the city has complied with for prior issuances. And will comply with for this issuance as well. Um one of the resolutions proposed for consideration is to engage Piper Sandler for underwriting services. They have provided underwriting services for for previous Laguna Ridge bond issuances. They have long-term experience and a deep historic understanding of the district. Um with that, staff recommends that the city council and the Elk Grove Finance Authority um consider adoption of the following four resolutions. For a city council and the Elk Grove Finance Authority to each adopt a resolution to approve the issuance and the financing agreements. For the Elk Grove Finance Authority to adopt a resolution to engage with Piper Sandler for underwriting services. And for city council to adopt a resolution to make any budget adjustments necessary to record the issuance of bonds and bond proceeds. Um this concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. The financing team and I are available to answer any of your questions.
Alright, thank you for your presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And for our attendees in the audience, this would be the opportunity to speak on the public hearing of item ten point two. And uh mayor slash president, vice mayor slash vice president and council members and board members. Uh we did not receive any pre uh submitted comments, written comments on item ten point two. And as I look over the list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand feature being utilized. So for item ten point two, that will conclude the public comment.
Alright, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. And now the following actions we are taking as council members, correct?
Yes, we will parse through as we move through the four motions. Um and the first one for motion one, you will be conducting that as members of the city council.
Alright, very good. Motion one.
Motion one.
Give him a second.
We have a motion in a second.
With a motion in a second, I will start the roll call vote for the city council, starting with council member Spies.
Hi.
Council member Hume.
Hi.
Council member Soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Motion one, the resolution will pass five oh. And now you'll be switching hats and transferring yourselves into the Elk Grove Finance Authority.
Alright, so now we are the board of directors of the Elk Grove Finance Authority, and looking for motion two.
Motion two.
Hume, second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second from our board of directors.
And for the Elk Grove Finance Authority, I'll start with board member Spies.
Hi.
Board member Hume.
Hi.
Board member Soon.
Hi.
Vice President Winn.
Hi.
And President Singh Allen.
Hi.
The motion two of uh and the first uh resolution by the Elk Grove Finance Authority will pass five oh.
Alright, motion three is also under the board of directors of the Elk Grove Finance Authority. So can I get a motion three?
Motion three.
Hume, second.
With the motion in the second, I will move to the roll call vote for our board of directors of the Elk Grove Finance Authority, starting with board member Spies.
Hi.
Board member Hume.
Hi.
Board member Soon.
Hi.
Vice President Winn.
Hi.
And President Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution by the finance authority under motion three of item ten two passes five oh.
Alright, our next action is conducted as the city council, and that is for motion four.
Motion four. Motion four.
Second.
We have a motion a second.
And then for the final resolution by the city council, I will start that roll call vote with council member Spies.
Hi.
Council member Hume.
Hi.
Council member Soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
And that resolution of the city council will pass five oh.
Alright, we are on item ten point three. I will adjourn. It's the adjournment of the joint Elk Grove City Council and Elk Grove Finance Authority meeting. And we are now on to item eleven, which is council comments, reports, and future agenda items. I will start with council member Spies.
Okay, thank you. Um let's see, got the League of California Cities this week. Uh and a library authority meeting tomorrow. Uh did want to mention that last week, we had the Sacramento Transit Authority meeting. And uh there was a decision not to pursue a tax measure. Uh and also last week, we had a meeting of the budget audit, excuse me, budget audit committee for the Sacramento Library Authority and nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Hume.
I'm coming, just give me a second. Uh thank you, Mayor. I uh very little report uh on the twentieth anniversary of September eleventh attended ceremony. Uh that a lot of us, if not all of us, were at um at the Elk Grove Cemetery. Um the greatest message that came out of that was how united we were.
The greatest message that came out of that was how united we were come September twelfth, and it lasted for a while, but it has devolved into perhaps a tribalism that we've not seen in this country, maybe since the Civil War. So that was a good message to remind us that we should be united as Americans first. And then with respect to meetings, all of them have been canceled leading up to this meeting, but I am double booked, and I have a connector Joint Powers Authority meeting Friday morning, followed by a San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting on Friday. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Sun?
Thank you. I'll wave my report.
Vice Mayor Wen?
Sorry, I'm getting there. There we go. Okay, I have a few things, actually. First, happy day after Mid-Autumn Moon Festival, and also happy birthday to Councilmember Darren Soon. I think he's turning twenty-one again this year.
Yes.
And, you know, I just want to address that. I think we've all seen it, that there has been some low numbers and positive cases here in our state, which is wonderful to hear, but also all across the region. However, as someone that runs a testing site and also a vaccine site, and also part of the county's coalition team addressing and educating our community about COVID nineteen, I can tell you that all the testing sites are seeing low numbers of community members getting tested. And I want to encourage folks to get tested as much as possible, because while you may be vaccinated, you may also be a carrier as well, too. And that's even more important now as we move into the flu season. I also want to share that I had my first homeless policy council meeting where we all shared some best practices in our city, which gave me an opportunity to brag about Ms. Bond Trager and her gift card program that has received numerous recognition all across the states, and that we talked about how we need to all work together. But also that homelessness is not something that we can solve overnight, and that we wanted some wins. So we're going to come back to talk about how we can look at what those wins can look like. I mean, I also wanted to share that our presiding judge, Russell Ham, has created a community engagement and fairness committee for the courts to address bias and inequities in our justice system. And I'm happy to share that I've been asked to serve in that committee, so I look forward to bringing some updates on that. And then I want to share that for the first time ever, there will be a nonprofit basketball tournament amongst nonprofits here in our region, and that it would be held here in our very own city at Sacramento Asian Sports Foundation. It'll consist of Asian Resources, La Familia, Urban League, Sacramento Covered, Boys and Girls Club of Sacramento, and Highlands Community Charter School. And we have some special guests, our very own Councilmember Darren Soon and Councilmember Pat Hume will be there to introduce the teams, but also give welcoming remarks. And the winning organization will receive a trophy and five thousand dollars. And then lastly, I'd like to get council support on this. After a twenty-year conflict in Afghanistan, our state pulled down, our service community members pulled out. And what we know is that our Afghan citizens, government employees, interpreters, they were translators, the Afghan National Defense and Security Forces personnel who supported our service members while they were there in Afghanistan, and now they find their lives and their family's lives in jeopardy. And as they are being resettled all across the U.S., here in our region is where the majority of these refugees will be resettled. As a matter of fact, we have a really good amount of Afghan refugees here in our city, in the city of Elk Grove. And I know this because this is the population that I serve. And we heard you talk about being an immigrant, Mayor Bobby Singh Allen. I am a daughter of refugees, and our very own Councilmember Darren Soon is a son of immigrants, but also married to an immigrant as well, too. So I'd like for us to bring a resolution forward in support of the Afghan community. I'd also like to, sorry, let me have my notes here. I had to take notes. Showing support to our Afghan community while honoring the commitments of the United States government in assisting the evacuation of the vulnerable groups. And then I also want to note that I am working with council members and supervisors in the following jurisdictions to pass the similar resolution, the city of Sacramento, Davis, West Sacramento, Rancho Cordova, Balsam, Lodi, and Sacramento County as well, too. So I'd like to get support for council in bringing that resolution back. I have language already that I can pass over to our city manager and our city attorney and our city clerk to look at.
So I would certainly be in support of the resolution for all of the various reasons that you stated, and actually maybe even raise the bar and go beyond the resolution. There's a lot of supportive needs that are out there, and I know that we've already started to create sort of an inventory of the resources available to our Afghan refugees as a clearinghouse, but really to be on the forefront. I've shared a number of resources with with our city manager. But and then there's also a weekly task force that Congressman Barra hosts as well on this, and provides us real-life updates in terms of what's happening at the federal level. And he's actually, I could tell you personally, he has helped save lives, Congressman Ami Barra's office. There were a number of families that were literally within hours of probably being killed. And I was, through some of our other partners, was able to connect the district director, Matt Cicato, who many of you know is a veteran. He was able to save those families' lives. So our congress member is also doing a lot. So, I mean, this is, you know, so it's timely, I think, not only doing the resolution, but making sure that we are also being welcoming and have resources in place so that we put some teeth behind the resolution. So I support what you're, the resolution, and I would, you know, just that we don't, that we continue doing the work and make sure that we are truly a welcoming community to our refugees that are already here. The school district already has a lot of numbers and data that we can that we can also benefit from. But there's going to be a great need for those resources as those populations increase. So I strongly support and hope to see we increase our level of engagement and support. I see Councilmember Hume.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, absolutely support this resolution. I think it was a travesty the way that we left Afghanistan and the folks who had dashed hopes of what their country could have become. And, you know, those who were lucky enough to get out, we need to remember that we are that shining light on a hill, to coin an old phrase. But if we're going to dabble into the quagmire that is and was Afghanistan, I would also like to have a resolution brought forward, recognizing the sacrifices of the men and women who suited up and served and and fought and got wounded and, in some cases, died. And now many of them and their families are looking back on all of that and going, what in the heck was that all for? So certainly appreciate and support the first resolution, but if we're going to recognize that, I think we need to also recognize the sacrifices made by the people who maybe question why.
Absolutely. I actually have a little bit of that also into the resolution that I I have that's been circulating, but we we can do separate ones, or we can combine them together as well, too. I mean, I'm just happy to hear that we're getting support for both items.
Great.
All right, so that's, I think there's sufficient direction for our city clerk and Mr. Bearman. I don't think we need anything further on that, do we?
Soon, just want to emphasize my support of both as well.
Okay. Anything further, Vice Mayor Wen?
No, ma'am, that's it. So I have, I hope at the next meeting to bring home the trophy and the five grand for the basketball tournament and win it for our city here.
All right, well, good luck to you. We'll all be cheering everybody on. I will waive my report. We do have a redistricting commission meeting that's being hosted by Supervisor Anatoly so that we can get information and make sure that our community is informed and engaged. I don't have the date in front of me. Mr. Bearman, do you happen to have that email from Supervisor Anatoly's office? It is the first week in October. We will share that widely. It will be held in our city hall chambers.
October fourth, Mayor.
Yep, October fourth, thank you. And that will be hosted inside our city council chambers, so that will be, I definitely want to make sure that our community gets access to that information, because as the district boundaries are drawn, we need to make sure that the city of Elk Grove feels like they are heard and seen and, you know, that we're advocating for our city. So I definitely plan to be there, and I encourage all of you, and hopefully our community residents show up as well. And then we have our webinars that are coming up here, so let's share all of those widely, because all of you, like me, get those repeated questions on affordable housing as well as homelessness. So we have a tremendous opportunity to educate. Tomorrow, I will be on a panel with Sarah Bontrager. It's a virtual town hall, Elk Grove Affordable Housing. It's hosted by the Sacramento Housing Alliance, and it is virtual. So any anybody interested in participating in that, the Zoom link is available publicly as well. So Vice Mayor Wen, beat me to the happy birthday greetings to our esteemed colleague, Councilmember Sun. You have any words of wisdom to share?
No, I'm I'm not wise at all, so.
Well, happy birthday to you, wishing you good health and prosperity, and we are so blessed to have you as one of our colleagues.
I heard a threat of a Zoom sing-along earlier. Is that?
Yeah, let's do it. Everybody put, get on the screen. And I'll do the countdown. Terrible voice here. You can unmute. You're not off the hook, Councilmember Spies.
You guys.
We're going to do this. All right, on the count of one, two, three, happy.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Councilmember Darren Soon.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Next time, Councilmember Hume, you get to sing. I think you have the better voice.
No.
Thanks, friends. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, and we will adjourn the meeting. It is seven thirty-seven. Be well.
See you later. Bye.